Okay, calling to order the Monday, June 1st, 2020, 6:00 PM, the meeting of the Winthrop School Committee. Patty, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barry.
Here.
Mr. Boncory.
Here.
I don't know where it went.
Here.
Mr. Matucci.
Yep.
Ms. Swob.
Present.
Ms. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Perrin.
Here. Okay, this meeting maybe will be recorded and maybe televised live. I'd like to ask Mr. Capabianco if he would lead us to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, its America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And Phil, thank you for providing the flag.
But I am, I can't see anybody. I'm not on right now. Oh, there we are. Okay. Could you see me when I was with the flag there?
No flag. Sorry.
Okay, public comment this evening can be sent to lhoward@winthrop.k12.ma.us. That's lhoward@winthrop.k12.ma.us. That'll be our public portal for any input. Okay, executive session. The chair anticipates going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Can I get a motion to enter into executive session?
The chairman motioned to enter executive session.
Mr. Capabianco makes the motion. Who is the second?
Jennifer.
Both of us.
Jennifer Powell's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Powell. Yes. Mr. Perrin.
Yes. They will be leaving for a short time to go into executive session, then will return to our regularly scheduled meeting. We are live back from executive session. Ms. Howard, do we have any public comment this evening that's come in?
Not at this moment. We do not.
Okay, again, that's lhoward@winthrop.k12.ma.us if anyone would like to have a public comment at the end of our session. Delicates and business. I believe we have none. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, minutes from May 11th of 2020. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of our May 11th meeting?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Mr. Boncory makes the motion. Who is the second?
Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Patty, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry. Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Powell. Yes. Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Okay, we have a few financial business procedures this evening. We have a warrant, SVW 20-19, the amount of $195,620.60. Can I get a motion on that?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swob. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Okay, we have two payroll warrants this evening. SPW 20-22 in the amount of $710,509.3 and SPW-20-23 in the amount of $782,806. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swob. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Same.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Same. Okay, we now have three budget transfers. I'd ask that they be taken together, the first being $114,682.94, the second being $29,106.67, and the last being $20,974.95. Can I get a motion to take them all together?
Motion.
Mr. Perrin, if I may, the transfers that you are seeing are pretty usual and customary at the end of the school year. Cleaning up lines, you'll see some minimal transfers of 10 cents, 4 cents. Just cleaning those lines up as we get closer to the end of the year. We're looking at the budget every day and moving items around. Clearly, no, we're not going to expend our, in, with the pennies that we're having in some of these, just cleaning those lines up. So if there are any questions on those, both Susan and I are available to answer any of the individual line items.
Okay, who seconded that? Can I get a second, please?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Capabianco, and now it's open for discussion. Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent as to the three budget transfers? Hearing none. Patty, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Powell. Yes. Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds. I see none. So we'll move on now to general functions, subcommittees. Budget, had a subcommittee meeting. Mr. Matucci, would you like to discuss that, please?
Sure. Wednesday, last Wednesday, the 27th, 4:00 PM on Zoom. Present were myself, Jen, Tino. Also there were Lisa, Susan, Jim Littary, Karen Chavez. We discussed the 2021 budget. We're at a point in the year now where we're getting closer and closer to the end of the year, and we, we need to figure out where we are. So we're doing pretty good for the end of this year. I think we're on target, and there may be a little bit of a surplus left over only because, you know, we've been closed and there's some utility savings. Also, there's been no spring sports and transportation savings. That's an expensive proposition of the buses. Also, Lisa and Susan put a freeze on the budget earlier in the year, which helped to save some money. And I think that's about it. Now, going into 2021, we had a couple of different budgets that we presented to the council of FinCom and the town manager, and one of them being the level service budget, which was 1.5 million over last year's number. What we're saying now is with some savings, like I just explained, plus a nice chunk of money towards technology and some other items from the SBAC, which had some money left over from the school building, the new middle high school had some money left over, and they appropriated some money for us to pay for some things, which will help us tremendously for the 2021 budget because we're allowed to spend that money. We, we are now able to get that number down to what I think it looks like about a million dollars over last year. So that's a good thing, obviously, because the town and the state and the federal government are going to have some issues with money because of what happened. So right now, it looks like the town's appropriating $800,000 for us for next year, and we're hoping that they can find another $200,000 to appropriate to the school department for a million over last year. Now, that's just, it sounds a little bit, you know, incorrect, or it sounds a little bit. That 1.5 number was a real number. Wasn't like it was a made up number. There were things that went into that number to come to a level service budget that changed. Things changed, and there's some stuff that changed this year, you know, pretty drastically. Hopefully, with the, on the revenue side of the town and with the state receipts, whatever they're going to do, we can get to that, that number hopefully. If we're at that number, there'll still be cuts, there'll be still stuff that's going to be, you know, less than last year, but there won't be any staff reductions, hopefully, as of right now. So that's what was discussed. There were no votes taken. It's a pretty, you know, important discussion, and as we get more towards the end of the year, those numbers become sharper, and you're able to see, you know, what it's exactly going to be. We need to still close the year. There's still some outside accounts that need to be closed. And then, of course, the town itself needs to know what they're getting from the state and, you know, local receipts and other things that contribute to their budget to find out exactly what they can give the school department. And hopefully, they can find that, that money to give to us so that we can spend it on educating our students. But that was it. Any question?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Matucci? Hearing none. We'll move on to policy. Ms. Powell?
Yes, we had a policy meeting this evening at 5 o'clock. In attendance was Tino, Mr. Capabianco, Ms. Swob, Mr. Boncory, and Mr. Matucci. We discussed the homeschooling policy in regards to sports, and we have voted to allow the homeschooling students to participate in our sports program as long as they are paying the usual fee and as long as their curriculum has been approved. That needs to go to a full committee meeting, which I believe it can, at the next, we can bring that out for a vote at the next meeting?
I think we can actually bring it up because it's coming out of committee.
Okay.
If no one has any objection.
We would need to waive the reading of the, of the actual policy.
Motion to waive the reading.
What's that? Motion to waive the first reading. Can I have a second on that?
Tino's second, but he's on, he's on mute.
I believe that you are seconding that motion to waive the, the reading.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Ms. Powell, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we alter our policy to, regarding homeschooling, to allow homeschooling students to participate in winter sports, provided that they are paying the sports fee that all the other students are paying.
And?
And.
The curriculum.
Oh, and that their curriculum is approved by the superintendent so that they are, have approval to be doing homeschooling.
Okay, can I have a second on that motion? Mr. Matucci seconds. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Yes. Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a related question? It's not about sports.
Sure.
I was wondering, are homeschool students allowed to participate in other extracurricular activities?
I, I believe that they are not, I don't believe that's part of that vote at this point. I think that was.
It was sports only. I just wondered.
So I think we'd have to send that back to policy as well.
Yeah, they are, that is not specifically listed in the policy, and we could, we could add that.
Okay.
We could add that to it.
Good, thank you.
And, and by practice, the students haven't been allowed to participate in sports even though it hasn't been a part of our policy. This is a cleanup to, to solidify and validate that. Lisa, do you know if the students participate in extracurricular activities? Have they been, have you had requests?
So I, I don't believe that we have had requests for them to do so at this point. Just athletics has been the only request that I have been made aware of.
So maybe next meeting, we can bring that back around and have that as part of the first reading of that. I don't think I need to go back to the subcommittee meeting unless someone else feels any differently. I think it's just, it's just cleaning up the language. So we'll have that on next, next agenda meeting, if we can have that for a vote.
Okay.
Okay, personnel. I'm sorry, superintendent's report.
Thanks, I thought you were going to skip me.
No.
At a time where the superintendent's report could actually be a very interesting novel, but I'm going to keep it to the items that are hot topic items for this week, or I'm sort of down to every two day hot topic items. And I'm going to start with graduation. First, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to the folks that have been involved in the planning of Winter High School's graduation, which is an event that we look forward to all, all school year. Right at the beginning of the school year, we start planning. The senior class advisors have been amazing. Their communication with Mr. Crombie and myself has been excellent. Their computer skills and Zoom skills are far better than any adult I know. As well as the students in the class as a whole, their communication to Mr. Crombie and myself from the get-go, the start of the planning process right through the school closure and right up until this past Thursday and Friday. Mr. Crombie's planning process since the school closure has been nothing short of a strategic plan that ensured that everybody had a voice in graduation, which is not typically the way things are done. Typically, a graduation date is set. It's pretty routine. We don't sway from our traditions very much, but given the situation that we're in, clearly, we needed to do that this year. Some other shout-outs, Meredith Hurley, the Winthrop Department of Public Health, the police chief, the fire chief, and certainly the town manager have all had a hand, an opinion, and support in putting together something that we haven't had to build before. And I think people have heard me say, I feel like I'm flying an airplane that I'm building as I'm flying it. And we've crashed a couple of times. However, we've, we've started right down the runway and taken off again. So the process we were at with graduation was putting forward different scenarios based on what our students wanted, and what our students wanted was a traditional graduation. So we did everything we could to vet that out and presented some plans to the Department of Public Health here in Winthrop. That was necessary, unlike in past years, in that the guidance from the governor and the Center for Disease Control has been sort of a moving target, and we need to make sure that we don't do anything to violate any of those policies and procedures. So having another body who understands those guidelines and policies has been extremely helpful. Last Friday, a week ago Friday, CDC threw us a little bit of a curveball and put out some additional guidance and used the words "high school graduation." Typically, up to this point, they have not been using the word "schools" or "education" in much of anything that they have spoken about. So our first plan, which was a traditional graduation on Miller Field with social distancing and adherence to all the guidelines, we felt we had a solid plan in place, and then that curveball came, and we had to go back to the Department of Public Health in Winthrop and provide some different options to them. Our goal was to provide those options to the Winthrop Department of Public Health to ensure that prior to putting any of those options out to our students for their feedback and our families, that we were going to be putting out options that we could deliver on and not make some promises that we would then have to pull away from our students who have had quite a bit of disappointment over the past several months. So we landed on two options that were acceptable. One was an option of a virtual slash live graduation ceremony that we had felt reasonably certain we could pull off on June 12th. That ceremony was one that would have streamed live all of our speeches, all of our giving out of our awards and our scholarships through WCAT and on an app to families where they would watch it within their homes at approximately 6 o'clock on June 12th. After they finished that ceremony, the live watch at home, the students were going to come in their vehicles with their family. So one vehicle per family with a student fully capped and gowned in the vehicle. They were going to pull up to the front of Winter High School, and we would have a stage set up with staff members on the stage socially distanced with masks on. And as the students approached the stage, just a student would exit the car, come up. We would have music playing, graduation music playing. We would announce their name. They would, in a contactless way, retrieve their diploma from a table and then walk across the stage, have their name announced. And at the end of the stage, we would have a space for them to stand and be able to take their own mask off and have a graduation photo taken. Parents would then pull the car up a little bit more. The student would get back in the car with their diploma and move along, and then the next student would pull up, and we would do that 127 times. So that was one option, not something that we really wanted to happen. However, it was something that we could afford to our students in a timely manner, one week after what would have been their graduation. The second option that was approved was a traditional live graduation ceremony on Miller Field in July, late July, July 23rd. The new CDC guidance had stated that come the end of July, after, anytime after July 19th, that we would be able to hold outdoor open ceremonies. We put that out on the survey, and we let families and students know that the ceremony would, that particular option would only take place if it was still in accordance with up-to-date guidelines from the governor as well as CDC and continued to be approved by the town, the Department of Public Health within the town. And if that traditional live ceremony is not permitted at that time due to restrictions, and so those are sort of the risks, because we don't know what's going to happen in two days or in a week, but if we get to July 23rd and we are unable to have that traditional ceremony because restrictions are tightened, then we would revert back to option number one. So we put that out to our students and our families via a survey and received overwhelmingly a request for option two. 82% of our students felt that that is what they would like, and 84% of our parents who answered the survey felt like they would like that option too. So to hold off until July 23rd and hold our ceremony at that point. So based on the data that we received from our families and our students, Mr. Crombie and I met on Friday and informed our parents as well as the committee and the other key stakeholders who were involved in this decision-making, that that is our plan as of this point. I've learned over the past 11 weeks that plans sometimes have to change. Someone who doesn't like change on a good day, this has been difficult for me as well as the rest of my team and certainly all of our students. So that is the plan we are going with for now. We still have more work to do on that plan because, in essence, we have to plan really two graduations, a live graduation, and then should we not be allowed to hold that graduation, to revert back to option one. Scholarships and class night plan. So we have a class night every year in which we give scholarships that have been awarded to our students for under $1,000. We are in the process of making some decisions about how we're going to do that, if we are going to have that separate from the graduation ceremony, or if we are going to combine the two. So I'll update you on that as we get a little bit closer to a decision on that. We're working with our class offices and Mr. Crombie as well. All of our scholarships are done, including the Fisella Scholarship, which is the town scholarship, which awards some relatively large, well over $200,000 worth of scholarships to 18 students. All of those students have been selected through a pretty rigid process that involves a scholarship committee of the town that takes several factors into thought as we are determining what those, who those students will be that will gather those scholarships. There's an essay involved in that scholarship, and again, a shout-out to our tech-savvy students who completed that essay at a very specific time, on a very specific day on the internet. So they had a call-in where they had to get into a group, they had to log in, they had to take a time-limited essay, and when the time was up, the essay was over. So that was an interesting way to do the Fisella Scholarship. Typically, we have them in a classroom, and the door is closed, and the students take the essay, and when the time is up, they turn their essays in. So those scholarships, students do not know what the scholarships are, and we do not plan on revealing that. Those scholarships are all well over $1,000, and those will be handed out and announced at graduation. But the student class night does the scholarships for under $1,000, and again, we're still in the process of planning that. Couple of other hot topics that are out there. Remote learning. We did a remote learning survey. We developed questions based on looking at some other school surveys that had been done, polling our teaching staff, asking them what type of questions they would like to see on a survey to the parents. We also looked at several emails we've received from parents throughout this process to come up with some common thoughts that people had. And I put that survey out, I believe, Friday at about 4 o'clock. And as of this afternoon, I had 467 responses. So the folks are taking that survey very seriously. The goal of that survey is to help us, inform us on, on changes that we would like to make based on parent information about the survey or received from the survey. And it's also going to help us inform our work moving forward in terms of technology, access to technology. One of the questions I did put on the survey is if school were to remain remote in the fall, how would you feel, how would you feel about that? Would this be overwhelming? Would you be fine? And I will be sharing the, the survey itself with the committee. So those, those are interesting. Another question that we felt was really important is if school were to open in September for students to come back into the classroom, how comfortable would you be in sending your child back to school? And so the answers to that is, have also been quite interesting. I think if I gave it about two or three more weeks, maybe many more parents would say, I am extremely comfortable. Please take my child. It's been a long time being, being at home. So I'm going to leave that survey open for about another five days and send a reminder to parents to make sure they log on and, and answer those surveys. But with well over 400 responses in a few days, I'm confident that parents will continue to provide us with their input and feedback. We also have a survey going out to the teaching staff, and a little bit of a different look to that survey to help us learn some more about what teachers need when it comes to remote learning. I will share those results with you as well, as soon as we get those back. We're working on school closings. I'll be informing you, many different grade levels are doing end-of-year activities and wrap-up. Many of our traditional ceremonies have sort of gone to the wayside because of the social distancing and, and not physically being in school. And some staff and parents are coming up with some creative solutions for closure for some of our students. Some parades for the little ones at the pre-K to 2 level are being discussed where parents may be driving by and teachers standing outside the school, contactless again, with masks on, but to be able to wave to their students and have a, have some closure for them. So 8th grade moving on ceremony and alike. I will inform the committee in the event that you want to attend any of those. Summer planning. We're at the mercy of the school buildings being closed, waiting to hear from the governor and the commissioner of education about what will be allowable in the summer. The one summer program that is mandatory is the special education summer program. We have not come to a final decision on that. Uh we have not come to a final decision on that yet, we're still awaiting. Guidance from the Department of Education and again, it's guidance, but it helps inform our decision making. Um that guidance was due out to us uh this week by Friday. Tomorrow I have a superintendent meeting with the commissioner of education in which he's going to update us. On uh the details of that and hopefully we'll have that in our hands on Friday. The buildings remain closed by the governor through the end of June. Um so waiting to hear a little bit more from him as to whether or not he's going to allow us into those buildings. And how that may look in terms of social distancing, the number of students we can have uh in a space. We are in the process of looking at our facilities in general, using C D C guidelines. Around um such things as office space, nurses' offices, front offices right now. Um our spaces are wide open and people friendly. Um with lots of ability to contact, so no barriers uh are up anywhere. And uh moving forward, there are some things that we do know that are not going to change. And uh those are uh the social distancing piece in places, smaller uh venues like nurses' offices, guidance offices. So our facilities team in collaboration with the town. Um uh facilities management team, uh they have been extremely helpful. Um because they are doing the same thing, so they've been working closely with us to help us. Determine how we will be restructuring some of those areas of our school to make sure we have shields up. Uh so that when families come in to ask questions, there is a barrier uh between secretaries or office staff or nurses. Uh and uh folks coming in as well as students coming up uh to our counters. We have um another item would be, I meet start starting tomorrow, I have the initial group, it's called the. Remote, um sorry, remote is stuck in my head, return to school task force. Um although the commissioner is coming out with guidance uh by the second week in June. To advise public schools on how to return to school, what that might look like. Uh in terms of a full return or a hybrid version of some remote learning. Uh and some school learning or a full remote model. Um June, middle of June is a little bit late for us in 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 the world of education to start planning for September. So we have put together our own return to school task force and. Subgroups, subgroups of the task force. The mission um of our return to school task force is uh for these subgroups. To advise the superintendent, which is me, of uh schools on on a comprehensive plan to relaunch our programs. Uh in a ti- in during this time of of COVID. The plan's going to be guided on some of our research, uh that including our surveys. Uh and um our student evaluations of how many students have engaged. Um and the guidelines that we have to go by uh from the state and the C D C. And our goal is to optimize the safety and security, obviously for all of the winter public school students as well as our staff and families. Um as well as reinforcing um our principles of equity throughout the entire school district. And to communicate our progress to the winter public schools community so that our schools can continue. To provide engaging, high quality education and related services to our kids. Just a brief snapshot of what some of those subgroups of our larger remote task force, which would be our administrative team. We'll have a facilities team, a health and safety team, a communication team. A finance team, technology team, uh building-based teaching and learning teams, food service teams and athletic team. Um sounds like a lot of people, I bet a lot of the same people are going to be on the same subcommittees of the task forces. We meet tomorrow to determine um who else we believe would be helpful on that team. Um and again, we're in the the planning stages of that, uh however. Um we are also expecting guidance from the Department of Education. It's a huge task to try to figure out how to come back to school in three or four different case scenarios. Um when we're not really sure what case scenario is going to be the most realistic. Well, that's just a little bit of a snapshot on that. And uh the other hot topic is the playground. Um our playground, fingers crossed. June third, we're expecting uh Ulti Play to begin the installation. And receipt of our equipment and start the planning. Um and and surface planning uh of the installation of that equipment. So if you swing by the Coming School and see some vehicles out there and folks doing work, uh that would be Ulti Play. Uh getting moving on what we hope to be a place where our kids can play uh and touch things uh come come September. Um that was a lot, I oh, two two other tiny things. Uh through the good work of um the town and and the police chief and Meredith Hurley and myself. Um we are working on getting um cameras that take temperatures of students. We are, another thing that we know um is pretty sure not to go away is the fact that when we do return to the buildings, that we will have to take the temperature. Of staff and students before they enter our buildings. There is a uh camera that does that for people in large groups so that you don't have to put a temperature. Uh thermometer on the foreheads of students, which not only is time consuming but scary. To a lot of our little kids, um that that would allow large groups of people as they walk in to have their temperature taken. Um sort of remotely, which is a word I am really getting sick of using, but sort of from a remote fashion. Um and then if that student's temperature was high, uh it would there would be an alert so that the nurse could then double check that temperature. Uh it moves students along faster and would be allow allow us to be more efficient. And I believe that's it, I am open for questions.
You have a question for the superintendent?
I do, um Lisa, I in the packet, I noticed that you had put some information in about homeschooling. And what are the criteria for homeschooling?
Yes.
Are you familiar with any, do do parents that are homeschooled, do ever, they go to an online? School in Massachusetts that's paid for through homeschooling by. By public schools?
So tho- that would be ver- those are virtual schools, like, so there's there's virtual school and homeschool are different, so the homeschool is. Is a parent-driven um process in which the parent provides the curriculum for the child or in fact. They may be hiring somebody, but it is um at at their their discretion in terms of how they're doing it. Virtual school is um it's an online program where students enroll such as. Um Vir- Virtual Academy is one of the schools, and if they are an approved Massachusetts virtual school. That comes out of um, that's a chapter seventy. Similar to school choice, so school choice money, if your child goes to a different community, the chapter seventy money goes to that community. If you attend a DESI-approved virtual school. The chapter seventy money that would have come to Winthrop for that child goes to that virtual school. Greenfield Public Schools, for instance, uh used Green, Greenfield, Mass used to run a virtual school. Uh they have since, I believe, been shut down. But TECA, T E C A, if anyone's interested in looking it up, Tecker Academy. Is one of the virtual schools that's approved by the Department of Education. I believe we have um, I I want to say four students in total that are partaking in virtual schools. And I believe we have approximately eight homeschooled students in Winthrop, but they're two, two separate processes.
And just one more question, I, when you said that there's going to be social distancing. It for sure in the summer, it you think if we go back to school, it'll be the same in terms of social.
That's what we're hearing, we're hearing um, you know, there's, there's all kinds of. Information out there, so I'm trying to stick with what C D C and the Department of Education is saying versus sort of the the. You know, rumor mill that's going around, but right now we are believing that it's. Six feet apart, keeping students six feet apart in a classroom is a a realistic forethought. Um if you think about the size of our classrooms, so that's part of what we're doing with this task force is measur- measuring classrooms. Seeing how many desks we can have six feet apart, um not sharing of manipulatives. Uh meaning students potentially won't be able to share certain items, we do a lot of sharing here in Winthrop. Um so you know, there's, there's some concern on our end about the cost impact of that. Um and then in our smaller classroom spaces, um to be six feet apart may leave us with. Six or eight people in a room versus like fourteen, so. So how do you accomplish that is is the next step, uh very, very overwhelming. Uh we're trying to worry about what we know we need to worry about when somebody tells us to worry. And and so, you know, you hang your hat on the Department of Education, they're a little slow to the gate, you know, uh. They're saying the second week in June is when they're going to let us know what those options would look like. Um the scary part of that is if those options look different, if it's left up to the local community. To decide if you're going to be remote, hybrid or um, you know, uh on a, on a. Staggered week schedule, which is some of the things they're saying. Um how that looks in different communities is scary because most of our teachers live outside of Winthrop. We have many young teachers who have families and kids, so if. Many of our families are coming, I'll give an example fictitious from Milton and Milton is completely remote. Those parents who are teachers in Winthrop, if we're not completely remote, I don't know how they're going to come to work if they have to stay home. And supervise their K to six, sixth grade uh students, so all that conversation is happening with the commissioner. Not real sure how much is being understood, but the superintendents across the Commonwealth are um feeling the same.
Thank you.
Any further questions for superintendent, Ms. Powell?
Yes, Ms. Howard, do you, have you given any thought or any, have any ideas about? The uh older children, the high school students being able to retrieve their belongings from the school?
Yes, so uh Mister Crombie, now that he's, I think he's got a little po- post-traumatic graduation disorder going on right now. Um I have a meeting with him tomorrow at two o'clock, that's one of the topics, our, the Coming School has retrieved their items. The middle school uh has re- students have retrieved their items on a drive-through. Where the the staff actually, for the most part, packed up their, the items for the students. The uh Gorman Fort Bank School is doing the same, the staff is packing up the bags and scheduling families to come at certain times. High school is a little bit different, um I talked to Meredith Hurley as well as uh the chief. About allowing ten students at a time to come in uh and go into their lockers and grab what they need. So I believe Mister Crombie will have a plan uh laid out for that for me, um hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, my understanding is there are also some things in the locker rooms.
Yes.
Not just.
So that'll be part, part of um of his discussion, we can certainly get ten. Um even twenty students at a time in different sections of the building, as long as they're coming in with masks on. Um and um grabbing their items and and going, they'll be the easiest group. Uh to have do that, so I'm just not a hundred percent sure what date Mister Crombie has planned for, but I can get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have a question. Um so, understanding that you have to wait, you know, two weeks to hear from the Department of Education. Um in regards to what they're thinking about, you know, for the fall and back to school and. I think it goes without saying that it's, you know, it it should be everybody's first priority to get these kids back into a classroom in some capacity in September for their. Not just education, but for their emotional and social, social well-being. Um and you know, we have a lot of resources within the community of um professionals who are doing this in real time so that. Offices can open back up and um businesses can can operate, you know, folks that work at Massport or work for some. You know, the convention centers and that such, you know, those types of occupations. Um is the task force tapping into any of the local um. Community professional resources that we have here that may be already doing this in real time for now. Um to sort of help with, you know, their expertise in the fall and helping to open up schools.
Yeah, so i- we've had surface discussion already, so tomorrow is the first formal discussion with the 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 um. Main task force, which is the principals of the building, the P P S director, the curriculum director. Um and I'm sure that is going to come up, I think some of the the differences in businesses is. The structure of the of the company, so the structure of our company is not just bringing employees back, we're bringing. All of our employees, plus we're bringing, you know, nineteen hundred and eighty-six bodies of children into these buildings. Um and we need to to really vet out who's going to be able to come back. Because we have a portion of our faculty um that is in an age group that may not be willing to come back, we also have. Um and we're identifying people, so this is part of it, we have a policy group too as well, we have um quite a few. Uh staff members that have medical um issues of their own. And we also have quite a few students that have medical issues of our own, so that's why we're putting together these subgroups and tomorrow's meeting. Um is certainly a roundtable to have some discussion about and who else from the community uh can we use to help us with this. Certainly tapping in um to the police department, tapping into um some of the local. Um vendors around our community to help us with signage. Um and I'm sure there's going to be some discussion on um, is there anybody who's done some work with spacing? We have two folks that have reached out to us um that do uh some data work around how to physically space out. People in an environment, um and that's been helpful, so I'll be bringing that to the table uh as well, so. More more to come after tomorrow to see what roundtable ideas uh folks can can bring on board.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, uh any personnel matters, appointments, resignations, retirements, postings or any leaves of absence?
So one resignation of an E S P at the Gorman Fort Banks. And for the postings, um we're we're being proactive and positive, fall and winter coaches are posted. Um we've posted our lead teacher positions uh at the Gorman Fort Bank School, a grade one um teaching position. To replace a retirement, a special education teaching position at the Coming School, an adjustment counseling position. Um at the middle school, these are all for um teachers who have either. Um who have resigned and a science teacher at the middle school, we have no leave of absence.
Okay. Unfinished business, homeschool student participation in high school athletics, I think we resolved that uh earlier in our uh discussion. Um now we come to the vote on the memorandum of agreement between the uh Winter Teachers Association Secretary Unit and the school. Uh Ms. Woke, can you bring us through that?
Sure, um we uh agreed in our last meeting with the secretaries that. Effective September one, two thousand twenty, election day will be a paid holiday for secretaries. When the teaching staff is not working. We also deleted, we just because it needed to be deleted, that New Year's Eve. Commitment in the fifth paragraph, since we're always, all of us are off, except for the entire Christmas holiday. That week between Christmas and New Year's. In article twelve, in terms of vacations, we added the. The note that vacation days carried over can only be taken during the school vacation weeks. The salary schedule remains the same as teachers, one point two five on seven one nineteen, two point two five. On seven one twenty and two point five on seven twenty-one. Everything else remained the same, thanks Mister Chairman.
Okay, can I get a motion uh to approve the Winter Teachers Association Secretary bargaining unit in the school committee? Uh under the terms outlined by Ms. Woke? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Capabianco, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Woke? Any discussion? Hearing none, Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mister Boncory?
Yes.
Mister Capabianco?
Yes.
Mister Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Woke?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mister Perrin?
Same. Uh second, we have a a vote on a memorandum of agreement between the Winter Teachers Association E S Ps and the school committee. Uh Ms. Powell, can you bring us through that, please, that agreement?
Yes, under the agreement that we reached with the E S Ps, they would get. Um salary increases totaling six percent, one point two five. In the school year twenty nineteen, two point two five in twenty twenty and two point five in twenty ten, uh I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. Um we would be adding language for them to call in by six A M on sick days when it all feasible. They will be asked to remain ten minutes after students have been dismissed, we reached an agreement on. The um procedure for them to be able to, when they're substitute teaching, to be able to pay, be paid for that. And we. And we have clarified language on that they will have a break, but that it can be split, and then there were some other minor cleanup, language cleanup.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Let me finish the. Can I get a motion on the Winter Teachers Association ESP unit in the school committee? Agreement is outlined by Ms. Powell. Motion by Ms. Wohl, can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
Ms. Powell seconds. Any discussion on the the new memorandum of agreement with the ESPs? Hearing none, can I get a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Yeah, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
I'm staying.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Dan.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Stay. Okay, moving on to public comment, do we have any further public comment, Lisa?
I'm just checking again right now, checking my email and I see none.
Okay. Moving on to public relations. Ms. Wohl, do you have anything this evening?
No.
No, other than thank you very much, Lisa, for putting that all together and. I'm going to use some of those bullets tomorrow night at town council meeting. And I hope everybody stays safe and continues to follow the safer at home protocol, which means mask when you're. Outside and six feet away from anyone, you should be wearing a mask.
Okay, Ms. Barry, do you have anything for public relations this evening?
Yeah, I'd just like to give a huge shout out to all the seniors that. Reached out to members of the school committee over the last week to talk about graduation. I was really impressed with. Their tenacity and how mature they sounded in their emails. I was really happy. To to see that, I thought it was really impressive.
Agreed.
Very true. Mr. Matucci, do you have anything this evening?
Good.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, I want to express appreciation for the remote learning survey that's being put out there and encourage all parents to participate in that because it is vital in. Making our policies going forward to understand what people are thinking in their experience.
Yeah, thank you too, Lisa. I want to second that, that's great.
Lisa, I just also wanted to say thank you for all the faculty and staff that in the the different departments, the town, I went through the police, the fire. For the the senior vehicle parade that came around town, I thought that was wonderful. I thought. That really brought a lot of smiles to a lot of kids' faces. It's where I started actually talking to the seniors about their graduation when they were asking questions and discussing it, but I thought it was amazing. I almost wish it was part of every year's graduation. But. But I just wanted to say thank you to them all and all the different departments that were involved. It really did. Bring a lot of smiles to a lot of us seniors faces.
It did, you know, I have to also make the comment that one thing that I didn't anticipate was the emotional side of it. When looking at all the little students, the younger students that are not seniors out there supporting the seniors. But seeing how excited they were to see people. You know, teachers, whether, you know, even though they're not their teachers yet, they'll be their teachers someday. But it was an awesome display of of teachers' love for their profession and. And, you know, just looking at the little kids' faces, just jumping up and down, okay, so maybe it was the fire engine, kids love fire engines. I thought it was me and Mr. Crombie and Mr. Sereno that they were psyched to see. But really, it really, you know, hit home that we're not in school and this is all so bizarre. And, you know, that you could see how much kids just miss. You know, that interaction with educators and the teachers afterwards felt like they were more impactful than just the senior class. That they were impacting other kids that they saw. You know, and just saying, hey, I'm a teacher and we missed you guys, can't wait to, you know, see you again in school, so I think it helped all around.
Very exciting, and again, thank you. We're at a point where we're going to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Boncory, can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Capabianco, Patty, roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Wohl?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it. I know it's tough at times again with the remote. Meetings, but I do appreciate the cooperation.
Thank you all.
Thank you, be safe, please.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.